Well, we're on already.
Welcome, everybody. We will get this meeting called to order. I call this regular city council session of August thirteenth to order. We have nobody here for the forum, so since we have nobody here, I will ask you all to please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, the regular city council meeting of July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, and the city council work session of July thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. So just a quick question. So this is for, this card is for the open forum, correct? So do we just do it, should we just do it at the end, or can we, can I go back and just do it? Okay, great. If you would like to, oh, we've got a couple more. And this is an item, the second card is an item on the agenda, and this item, we will be taking the comment at the item, so we will just do one. So Ronald, if you'd like to, please come to the podium, state your name and your address, and if you could, please keep your comments to three minutes.
You.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm an attorney, so three minutes is gonna be impossible, but I'll do my best. I have lived, Ron Burgland is the name. I've lived at sixty-six fifteen Lake Shore Drive, near Lyndale and Sixty-sixth Street, across the street from Pizza Luce for eight years now. During that time, I have observed a lot of problems with the pedestrian crosswalks. These problems were significantly made worse with the roundabouts. And I am using these crosswalks every day because I go over to LA Fitness, or over to Woodlake, or over to Pizza Luce, absolutely every day. So my comments are from firsthand experience, being out there all the time. And I'm gonna give you my honest opinion, and I'm gonna give some recommendations, what I hope and pray somebody gets, takes some action on. The law, as most of you probably know, is that the pedestrians, I've read many articles that say you have to step one foot into the road, but the ordinance, or I should say the statute doesn't really say that. It says that the vehicles have to stop when they see a pedestrian right there at the crosswalk, and trust me, they don't. Fifty percent of the time, they either blow right on through, or they're wearing what they call, in the horse racing industry, blinkers or blinders. And honest to goodness, I've been almost killed numerous times. There are many, many seniors, including myself, in the area, and I've seen some horrendous situations. And I estimate, believe it or not, that fifty percent of the time I cross at, at the roundabout at Lyndale, or in front of Pizza Luce, or over going to Woodlake, there is a violation, which I'm just shocked. Now, the roundabout, I have to say, there's a lot going on. You have to be, as you're driving up, you have to be looking here, looking here, and I, I can kinda see that people get flustered and crazy, but they go way too fast. And when they come out of that circle, they're like a slingshot. So I wish that there could be some operations I'm gonna talk in a second about in Saint Paul. They've had some, I'm gonna hand out, I hope you take some handouts, because I've done a little research, and I'd love to hand you, read about what Saint Paul has done. It's pretty impressive. What we don't wanna have happen is what happened in Portland, Oregon, just a few weeks ago. An eighty-two-year-old lady was killed. And it's gonna happen here, trust me. I see it all the time with all the seniors in my neighborhood. Now Pizza Luce, right in front of there, there's no excuse. There's nothing going on. It's a straightaway, and people come shooting out, up there really fast. I've had to stand there many times, just walking out and coming at me at about fifty miles per hour. This has happened numerous times. Other times, they'll, yesterday, there was an old guy in the middle, and there was some person coming on the other side, going about forty, just with blinders on, and just didn't see the sky. And I just sit there holding, seriously, it's horrible. Lake Shore Drive is similar. There's really nothing in the way. They just kinda come, and there's blinking lights that people can push the button or not. My observations are they're going way too fast, they're not paying attention, or they're just totally oblivious, and they're horrible drivers. What's going to happen? Well, it might be like Portland, Oregon with this eighty-two-year-old lady, and I would rather be proactive rather than wait for the accident to happen and just say, oh, what are we gonna do now? I know I've gone on the internet, the city of Minneapolis and the city of Richfield have these seventy-five-page documents about their master plan. Didn't find anything. I quickly perused each document addressing this specific issue. But what can be done? What Saint Paul has done in some of the suburbs, they've taken police action, they've got a website. One night, they did three crosswalks, and they had police officers, I think in plain clothes. They found in just a short time, they got forty-five violators, they gave out forty tickets, one hundred and seventy-eight bucks a pop. And something like that is gonna get people's attention. I would like to pass out these, these things, the statute, of course, just to clue people in that there are these master plans that don't address it. A little bit on that Portland, Oregon situation, and some amazing stuff of what Saint Paul has been doing. And I'd like to see Minneapolis and Richfield doing something similar. So thank you very much for giving me three minutes.
The next item we have is a presentation that will be given by council member Supple.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am pleased to be introducing two members of the Richfield Public Schools. The first is Christina Gonzalez. She's the Director of Student Support Services. And the second is Bridge Mackay, who is the Coordinator of the Health Resource Center. And they're gonna tell us about the Richfield Health Resource Center. So welcome, and go ahead.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about our work at the Health Resource Center. I'm gonna be brief and turn it over to Bridge. But I just wanted to talk about our partnership with Park Nicollet Foundation. They allocated close to three hundred thousand dollars for us to transform three classrooms at our high school into a full-service health center. And Bridge is gonna talk about the multiple layers of supports and services available to Richfield residents and Richfield students who attend Richfield Public Schools, age zero to twenty-one. But thank you so much for the time.
Yes, so, excuse me, I'm here to tell you a little bit about the Health Resource Center. So we are a school-based clinic plus a hub for other partnerships. We work to either provide direct health services towards youth who live in Richfield or go to school here, or we connect them with those health services if we're not able to provide them directly. So we focus on all ages of youth, so that's birth up through high school graduation is how we define it. Any of them can receive services at our health center. So we really work to connect families who might not otherwise have access to healthcare, so families who are uninsured or underinsured. But anyone is welcome to come also. You can see up here is our mission. And the health center first opened at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen, so we are now in our fourth year, so it seemed like a great opportunity to come and give an update on how things are going, and update on what services are offered, and what utilization rates are looking like. So here is a list of all of our partnerships. So Christina mentioned, our main partnership is with Park Nicollet. So they provide the funding for the clinical services, and they also provide staff, to staff the clinic. All of the providers are Park Nicollet staff. We also have partnerships with Portico Health Net. They come once a week and do health insurance navigation, so they will do assistance with the kind of long, complicated applications for public health plans. We also partner with Children's Dental Services. They're on-site pretty regularly. It's been probably about three or four times a month recently that they do a full clinic at our site. And then they also do some school-based dental clinics as well. Park Nicollet also does some mental health services for us. They do a cool program that's a Skype therapy session for students, so students can just come out of class, have a session. They don't need to get a ride anywhere. They can just have their mental health session at school. And then our final partnership is with Canvas Health, and they do chemical health support. So we're able to do a full chemical health assessment at the school if that's a need. Here are some ways that we're doing outreach to students, staff, the community. I run a student wellness council group that does peer education. A lot of the students, particularly the ninth and tenth graders, get a tour through the health center every year. Lots of flyers and handouts for the parents and community. We do mailings, tabling at school events. Staff also get tours, emails, and then there's also an advisory meeting every month where a representative from each of our partner organizations attends, plus key staff from the schools. Okay, so here are some of our numbers. So I mentioned we opened at the beginning of two thousand and sixteen. Here are numbers for the last couple of years. You can see that it's been steadily increasing since the clinic opened, both average per month and total visits per year. And this gives you an idea of what those youth are coming in for. So blue is two thousand and seventeen, red, two thousand and eighteen, yellow is two thousand and nineteen to date. So our key services are immunizations on the far left, sports physicals are also really common, acute symptoms, and then on the right, contraception and pregnancy-related services also. Okay, so a little of our demographics. This is for two thousand and nineteen so far. You can see that the majority are multiracial. We've been seeing that category increase every year. But overall, the students coming in pretty well represent the demographics of the district as a whole. Next, age. When the clinic first opened, we were seeing a majority of high school students, so that's the age fifteen to eighteen. The longer the health center has been open, the more we've seen that be a little more equally represented. So you can see the younger ages have higher percentages now than they did when we first opened. And here is gender. We've been seeing a trend towards more female students accessing services at the health center. I'll make a note that we added a third gender option. You don't see that on here because no one has yet selected that, so it's just male and female on this chart. Here is insurance status. So you can see about fifty-four percent report that they have insurance. We don't bill insurance if students have it. We just kinda track out of curiosity. Twenty-nine percent reported no. We've seen a little bit of an increase in the students who have health insurance over the last couple of years. So those were all numbers for the clinic itself. Here's some numbers for those other partner services that we mentioned. So this is for the telemental health, those mental health services. So you can see the number of students who've been receiving services, and then the total number of sessions. It's also been pretty steadily increasing. Every year, we've added hours because there's been such a great need. There are more therapy hours available now. And then you can see some of the common concerns that students are coming in for. Depression, anxiety, grief, loss, trauma, interpersonal issues. Here's for Portico. This is tracked by the number of applications that they have successfully sat down with someone and completed that application. This service is available in both English and Spanish. And it's, it's basically to help with that complicated application process, and then also for families who need to update or do any changes. It's helpful to just have someone walk them through that process. Here's children's dental services. I mentioned that they've been having more and more dates at our site recently, and you can see that reflected in the numbers. The increase between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen is pretty large. I don't have numbers for two thousand and nineteen, but we've had twenty-nine clinic days so far that they've set up at our site. And they average, I would say, about ten patients a day that they can see. Here are the clinic hours. Open Monday and Wednesday afternoons, one o'clock to five o'clock. It's a little tricky with the construction right now, but the best way to access the health center is through a back parking lot. There's a parking lot back by the athletic field and the railroad tracks. Any questions, comments?
Councilmember Garcia.
I just wanted to ask, the partnerships that you have, do they donate their time and their skills? They do?
It varies a little bit for each partnership. Several of them have grants specifically to do the work in our health center. And then Park Nicollet Foundation funds staff time for the clinicians who staff the clinic.
Thank you.
So interestingly, Councilmember Garcia, hi, nice to see you. Interestingly, we don't spend one dollar as the district on these supports and services besides the janitorial resources and then the staff allocation. And we have some grants to fund Bridge's position, but this is fully funded by our partners, the staff, person power, the time and the materials and resources, and for that, we're really grateful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there questions from the council? Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna ask, how many staff, and maybe helpful to distinguish, how many, like, school staff, and how many other from these various partnerships are there on any given day?
Yeah, so that ranges from day to day, and I'm gonna let Bridge talk about the mechanics. But for within Richfield Public Schools, myself, I would say about ten percent of my time is allocated as the Director of Student Support Services. And then Bridge is full-time, our Richfield Health Resource Center Coordinator. And then we also have leadership at the high school attend our advisory meetings, and the school social worker, which is about two to four hours a month of staff time allocated, and then onsite depends on day to day.
Yeah.
I'll let Bridge talk about that.
So a, a Portico staff member is onsite about four to five hours a week. Our therapist is onsite about, it's a total of about ten hours a week. Dental, it, it varies based on their schedule, but when dental clinic is there, it's about two staff, about eight hours a day. And then in terms of the clinic, we have a physician who is onsite on Wednesdays, a nurse practitioner on Mondays, and then they also have a nurse on staff. And the receptionist.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation. As a teacher in the middle school, it's been great the last few years at the parent-teacher conferences, when topics come up to be able to say, well, we have this Health Resource Center, because there are people that'll say, I don't have insurance, how can I get help with this, how can I get help with that? And it's really great to be able to say, well, we have a resource right here in Richfield that you can go to.
And one of the resources, I wanna be, I wanna hold up all of the supports, but especially for our community and for our council members, is Portico Health Insurance Navigation. For our families that are uninsured or underinsured, and that's across age. So any person that lives in Richfield or works in Richfield can come in and get supports to determine what they'd be eligible for around health insurance. And folks who do not have status in the United States do have access to certain supports and services. So we see folks coming in across the age and developmental span, getting supports to determine what they have access to in way of health insurance. And our person is Spanish-speaking, which is really critical for our health insurance navigation through Portico, and that's Wednesdays from one to five. And we can get flyers to folk. We can share with Katie. We're in the process of changing our logos, and we're happy to give anyone a tour when we do not have patients in the building for their confidentiality. So if anyone of you would like to see or get a tour of the health center, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. So these are two similar questions. Are there any trends or issues of concern that you're seeing, and especially relating to the needs of the family? Because I know this is for the youth, but the health is really family-based. And then, do you have any goals for moving forward, how to make it more successful? How can we support you? What are some needs that you might have moving forward?
Yeah, so definitely in way of unmet needs, I would say supporting adults that are twenty-two and over. The dental services are also available across age, and we've had some expectant mothers receive support. So I would say preventive care for adults, and then prevent both dental and medical care. And then your second question, Mayor?
And then do you have a vision for how to be successful in the future, what that looks like, where you might wanna expand, and how we can support you?
Oh, thank you. So we are the newest health center and the most utilized. So there are health centers in Saint Louis Park, Brooklyn Center, and Burnsville. And we have become the folks that Park Nicollet turns to to talk about, marketing and engagement and support to families. However, Park Nicollet, we wanna meet any need that is out there for folks that are zero to twenty-one, who live in or attend school in Richfield. So continuing to Mary's example around our students, that letting folks know that this is a support and a resource. Dental needs are really significant as well for our young people. Getting kids to and from dental appointments gets in the way of learning and attendance, so we have school-based dental supports, literally in the kid's school, through Children's Dental Service as well as through the clinic. So I would say my, our only ask would be to keep talking about these resources and supports. We'll get you updated flyers. And what, Bridges, is there anything you'd say in way of gaps?
I would add off of what you're saying to say that it's difficult to reach families that aren't enrolled in the school district sometimes. Those pathways of communication just aren't as present, so any help around that would be appreciated.
And for relationships you folks might have for students that attend schools other than our public schools, Bridge can come out and do presentations. She can do, have a table, anything to support getting the word out about these supports at the high school.
Thank you. And then I'd just like to say thank you for the, to the two of you for having such great leadership. I've been able to work with you on several different initiatives, and the Wellness Council, the Student Wellness Council is absolutely amazing. They are leaders in the schools. Kids look up to them. I know they helped in the implementation of the Tobacco Twenty-One policy. They're really, you know, using their leadership as youth with their peers around the vaping and all of that that has really been increasing in the schools. And they are mentors. I mean, they presented a stellar presentation at the Richfield Ready Breakfast. They were amazing. I really couldn't believe that they were so young, and really, they, they did a great job. So thank you for your leadership, and thank you to the Wellness Council. And we're really fortunate to have both of you and the Wellness Council, but as well as our clinic, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your support. As councilmembers and the mayor, we appreciate it as well.
Thank you very much.
That was great.
All right, the next item is hats off to hometown hits. I will start with Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, the, the biggest hats off that I have is for everybody that was in Richfield that was able to participate in the, the Night to Unite last week. It's something that I looked, looked forward to every year. I looked forward to it before I was on the council, but it's just an amazing opportunity to connect with your neighbors. Hopefully, you had an opportunity to do that. It, it's always, it's, it's always great to hear from, from residents what their, what their concerns are, but mostly what they're happy about. And people are always, people, even though it's, even though it's summer, talk about our, our plowing and how happy they are with that. A lot of really positive feedback about how, how the roads are developing. But even more than that, it's, it's just people that you kinda, you kinda vaguely know who your neighbors are, but you're embarrassed to say it because you don't know their name, you don't know, wanna reach out, and this is, this is the opportunity where you, people go from acquaintances to friends, and so it's a great opportunity. And then there was, there was one, one gentleman, Bob Englund, who, who is, he's just going around to his neighbors, trying to create environmental impact and everything. So he just took this as an opportunity to engage his neighbors on that. I just wanna, wanna thank him for doing that, and hats off to Richfield.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Garcia.
Well, I, I also wanna say that I really appreciate Night to Unite. It's, it's kind of the best opportunity to do something at a constituent's home where they're really comfortable, they're, they're, they're eager to talk, they're having a good time. And, you know, they ask questions. If we don't know, we get back to them. But they're, but it's, it's probably the best deal going on as far as what the city does and the city council does. I mean, you just, you just can't compare that, and I appreciate that, that our city manager and, and our chief of police also attended, because that's an important aspect. I think the city manager is, is always poised to communicate with constituents, and I think this affords her an opportunity to see the big picture. Because oftentimes, you, you know, I mean, a lot of times, we get a lot of complaints and stuff. But it's so nice when you go to, into a community, into a neighborhood, and they say, you know, thank you very much. You know, we appreciate you, and we like to take notice of, of our neighbors in our neighborhoods. And it'd be nice if we could do this more than once a year. Then the, the other thing I was gonna say is, don't, don't forget to patronize your farmer's market.
Mayor, could I just?
And Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would be remiss if I didn't point out, just like Councilmember Garcia did, but, but just specifically thanking our, our police and law enforcement who really organize it from the city level, and they, the permitting and the coning and all that, they, and not just the officers, but the staff are really involved in helping us. You just make this, kinda shut the city down so we can just be neighbors. So, so thank you for, for everybody in our police department, and also for firefighters, even though it's the police's event, they showed up, and everybody loves, they, people are less excited when you see a council member pull up in a Camry as opposed to a police car, or a police officer in a cruiser, or the firefighters in their trucks. But everybody came out, and so, so thanks to all, all of our staff that serve.
And let me, a P S to that is, you know, it's really the, the, our police department that pulled this together. And, you know, I mean, they, they do it, they wanna do it, they appreciate doing it, and they're really involved in doing it. Because, I mean, when we stopped by some neighborhoods and they said, oh, yeah, we had a cadet and, and a police officer, and, you know, of course McGruff is awfully popular, too. So, so, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, Councilmember.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to everyone involved with the Night to Unite, and it was fun going around to all the parties and everything. I did make a promise to several people that I would mention that we should stop for pedestrians in the crosswalks. That was a very popular at one of the parties to talk about that. And the gentleman tonight came from that party to speak on behalf of his whole neighborhood, so to talk about the pedestrian safety. So please do stop in the crosswalks for everyone. That is a highly important thing. My second thing is, a couple of council meetings ago, we talked about the meter replacement project. And I have to say, I got the notice, and they stopped by, and it was real easy, and we set up a time, and they were very professional. And so if you're waiting to get your meter replaced, it's a simple procedure, and it worked really well. So I just wanna put a plug in for that and say kudos to the Public Works Department.
Thank you. Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you. I'll, I'll just say ditto to everything about Night to Unite. Really a great experience. Beyond that, wanted to lift up, we had another copy of the, the joint calendar between the city and the schools. You should have received it in the mail about a week and a half ago or something like that. But just cool to see a really tangible piece of evidence of the, the growing collaboration between the city and the schools. Thought that was really well done and was excited to see that. And then have a, a list of upcoming events. This Thursday night, there's a, a back-to-school event at the Band Shell with some free school supplies, and even raffling off a few bikes. On the seventeenth and eighteenth, the Three Rivers Park District is hosting a free event at at Taft Park with some kind of high adventure things like a zip line and some other activities there. And then the last one isn't for a couple of weeks yet, but on August twenty-fifth, sort of wearing the hat of my, my day job, I work at House of Prayer Lutheran and we're hosting a parking lot party, a block party, that's not at all faith-related, just a way to celebrate with the community. And wanted to let everyone know if you want a chance to get Mary and Maria in the Dunk Tank. They're joining us, as long as State Representative Mike Howard and then some of the leadership from, from our congregation as well. But we'll have the, we'll have the Dunk Tank schedule set up soon. So if you want to come dunk them, I invite you to join us.
Can you mention those dates, the date again?
Yes, that is on Sunday, the twenty-fifth, from three to six in the afternoon.
Thank you. Everything I have, well, the few things I wanted to share, some of them have been said already. A couple additional ones. I do want to say thank you to Ronald Burgland for coming and speaking, and I would like to follow up with him. But that is something that we hear more and more concern with our residents is really the safety of the roundabouts. And I do think we need to make sure we're making that a priority in educating all people using roundabouts, walkers, bikers, drivers alike, because it is, it is a huge safety concern, especially the roundabouts, the roundabout he's talking about with so many seniors that live in that area. So thank you to him. And it is something that I would really like us to prioritize, that educational piece for our residents. There is a Partnership Academy ribbon cutting at the new Partnership Academy School on August twenty-third from five to seven P.M. And the address is sixty-five hundred Nicolet Avenue. So that will be a celebration that we will be having as well. And lastly, I just would like to say that I really needed the National Night Out, the Night to Unite, or the National Night Out, because that was a week or so after the El Paso and the Dayton shootings. And it's, I'm sorry, I just, it's, nobody should have to feel afraid to go to the grocery store, to go to a community celebration, to go to their place of worship and fear violence, hate, aggression, or death. And it is becoming increasingly more prevalent in our country. And we need things like Night to Unite and we need things like the celebration at your church and all of the things, the back-to-school night, to come together. And it's the responsibility of every single one of us to make our community safe and to build relationships with people who are different from ourselves, to connect with our neighbors and to protect one another and to build a positive community. And I think the worst day for me was the day of National Night Out. I think it accumulated and, and I just needed to be with my community. And it was amazing to hear so many people laughing, getting together, talking about how some of these block parties were brand-new and they had so many people there. And other parties have been going for over twenty-five years. And to hear the stories of the families and the residents to eat all the amazing food and to hear the great accolades that we have about our city, our staff, our council, our police, our fire, and our neighborhoods. So I, I'm just thankful to be in the position that I have. And I ask every single one of us to please take leadership in building community, because that's the only way that these things are, are going to lessen is by reducing the fear of the unknown and building community.
Well said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar and goes to City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. Item A, consideration of the reappointment of the firm Bergen KDV as the city's auditor for the financial reporting fiscal years 2019 and 2020 and to authorize the city manager and mayor to execute an agreement for such services. Item B, consideration of the adoption of a resolution authorizing the purchase of three temporary construction easements and three permanent right-of-way easements at sixty-six hundred Lyndale Avenue South, sixty-seven oh one Lyndale Avenue South, and sixty-eight oh one Lyndale Avenue South as related to the Lyndale Avenue reconstruction project. Item C, consideration of transfer of funds to close out a certain capital project fund. And I did have a request just to provide a little bit of information on this. This is, this project, Capital Projects Fund was for the Portland Avenue project. And it is complete and we will be transferring about twenty-nine thousand to another capital project funds that collects MSA funds, municipal state aid, which funds our Sweet Street program. And its best practice is to close out capital projects funds when they're, when the project is completed. Item D, consideration of the approval of the purchase of a truck chassis from Nuss Truck and equipment for a hundred and six thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and dump box nose fighting equipment from Towmaster Inc. for a hundred and four thousand six hundred and sixty-eight, totaling two hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars, plus taxes and licensing in 2020 for use by the Public Works Department. And I submit the following, or the preceding items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any council discussion on the consent? Yep, Councilmember Whalen.
I should have noticed this earlier. I'm just noticing the wording of letter A seems slightly awkward. I don't know if there's a word missing. Does that, I mean, the intent is clear. Does that need to be clarified or is it fine as is?
I'm happy to restate it if you like.
I mean, as long as it gets, the, the point is to reaffirm them. And as long as it's clear enough to do that, then that's fine.
Okay. Councilmember Whalen, is that an of between reappointment and the?
I guess, or an extra comma? I'm not exactly sure.
Consideration of the reappointment of the firm.
Maybe, yeah, maybe that would do it. Just reading, sorry, I'm being nitpicky. As long as it gets done what we need it to. Yeah, okay.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The consent calendar has been approved. The next item is consideration of the adoption of resolutions to adopt conditional use permits to allow small cell wireless facilities at multiple locations throughout the city. SAC Wireless, on behalf of AT&amp;T, the applicant, is requesting approval of conditional use permits, CUPs, in order to allow the installation of small cell wireless facilities in several residential areas. The applicant is proposing to replace four city-owned light poles and two utility poles with new poles that will accommodate the attachment of small wireless, small wireless facilities. The poles are located on the right-of-way but adjacent to the following residential properties. Seventy forty-four Harriet Avenue, seventy-one zero zero James Avenue, sixty-six forty-five Thomas Avenue, sixty-eight forty-five Thomas Avenue, sixty-four hundred Nicolet Avenue, sixty-four forty-four Upton Avenue. These sites were identified by AT&amp;T's radio frequency engineers as areas where cellular coverage was lacking and where light poles, utility poles, or other structures that could be, could feasibly hold a small cell wireless facility were present. The small wireless facilities are able to fill pockets of poor cellular coverage that signals from traditional towers cannot reach. In order to better coordinate with the Lyndale Avenue reconstruction project, the installation proposed for approximately seventy-one zero eight Lyndale Avenue has been withdrawn. In order to approve the conditional use permit, the council must find that the request is consistent with the purpose and goals of the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code, complies with applicable, or applicable performance standards, and will not cause undue adverse impacts on governmental facilities, utilities, or services, or on the public health, safety, or welfare. The proposed installations do not conflict with the city's comprehensive plan or zoning code. The placement of the installation on existing or, or replacement poles limits aesthetic impacts in single-family zones. And the supplied frequency study indicates that radio frequency emissions be within the acceptable limits of the general public set by the Federal Communications Commission. A full description of the CUP requirements can be found in the attachments to this report. So I will pass it over to our staff to explain a little more. I know we had a public hearing at the Planning Commission. And I think there is one person here to speak. I don't know if anyone else in the audience wanted to speak to this issue? No? Okay. So I will just kick it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to add that at the public hearing on July twenty-second, there was quite extensive testimony. That primarily focused on the potential health impacts of these installations. There was a, there was a back-and-forth discussion of that. And essentially, what's happened with the FCC rulings and the legislature is that they have determined safe levels of radio frequency. I'm not sure I'm getting that term quite right. They've established safe levels for the general public. And the city can't impose more stringent requirements than the federal government has put in place. So the applicant has provided studies to show that they are well within those limits at ground level and even above the limits of exposure are less than five percent of what's allowed by the FCC. So given that, the city is recommending, staff is recommending approval.
Thank you very much. I'm wondering, before we have council discussion, if we could ask the one resident who would like to speak to come up and speak? And normally, we do not allow for public comments on an issue that's not on the agenda. But if people are here and would like to comment on the issue, that is fine for tonight. And we ask you to please just sign in, write your name, your address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And I do know that the city council has reviewed the comments and the notes from the Planning Commission meeting. So if you could please be brief with your comments and keep it to anything that's, that's new and was not shared in the, in the public hearing at the Planning Commission.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Kathleen Ballaban and I live on Sixty-Fifth and Stevens. Going back to the Planning Commission, you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the addresses. And I thought I heard today that you said sixty-four hundred Nicolet. Is that correct? Because there was a tower that was removed?
Seventy-four zero zero Nicolet.
Seventy-four but not sixty-four hundred?
No.
Okay, then I misunderstood. Okay, as to what I'm here to talk about is not so much the AT&amp;T or the Verizon. What I'm here to talk about is electromagnetic fields, EMFs are referred to. Now, you guys have either met me personally or you have met me via emails. And what I'm here to talk about is not just the cell overhead, but the FCC, Federal Communications Commission, they're using nineteen ninety-seven data. And we have grown so fast. And 5G is what they're speaking to here in the United States, but 8G is already in Europe. And it's electric is, is one thing, magnetic is another. One is the voltage and the other is the pulse. Now, I asked the Planning Commission if the tower, and I'm making this up, because we have other facilities on those towers, you know, we have other things. So if the new cell comes in at five gauss meters, you know, from the gauss meter, and the old one is five, the new one's five, are they ten or are they five? Do they add together or do they still equal five? Nobody can tell me that. Nobody has told me that yet. So what are we exposing ourselves to? The information you've received, and anybody can go out and look at it, it's on W W E H Trust dot org. It's the Environmental Health Trust. And there's others. There's, I gave you one and their website doesn't work right now. I checked it before I came. But really, it's about distance. First, you've got a tower, you've got a hot box, whatever you want to call it. And it's the distance between the generation and the, and the person, like me. Like this here, this thing is hot, because I tested it already. I get here, now I've got ten. Oh my God. I move over here, I'm at less than point five. Okay, it's distance. On average, it's three feet. Now, we, biology says we're made up mostly of water. Seventy to seventy-five percent of our body is water, the rest is made up of cells. Our brain, electromagnetic, is sending little sites, little, little electric generation to our body. So we're nothing but swooped-up electromagnetic fields. We talk about our personal space, it's three feet up.
Ms. Ballaban, if you could wrap up your comments, please.
So I'm asking our city to look at what we're generating from hot boxes, overheads, underwires, to tell us what we're being hit with, how much. And when we add these new towers, how often are they going to operate it? And will we be known? Will we be notified, rather? I'm asking our cities to protect. It's, I call it air pollution. That's what it is, coming through the air. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from council to staff? Councilmember Garcia.
I wanted to ask Ms. Palin if, for example, you know, you work with, with the wireless facilities folks, you know, on this. How closely, how, how does, how did that happen? I mean, do you work real close with them or do they just tell you where they want to place their, their equipment?
Councilmember Garcia, the, the companies come in and tell us where they have gaps in their service and where they'd like to place these installations.
Okay.
So they, they look for facilities that exist where they can place them. So they'll find, they'll identify the gap in their coverage. They'll look for existing light poles or existing utility poles in those areas and then apply for those locations.
So I trust that they're good to work with, being that we have to have those?
Right, we, we have a good working relationship with the folks that have applied for this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, a couple of questions and comments directed, I think, primarily to our city attorney, Ms. Teigen. But, and, and just to jog everybody's memory, when we found out that we had no choice about the 5G equipment that was going up, that the state legislature had passed and basically created that, that obligation for the city to accept these. And there are some, and so, so I was, I was hoping that you could speak to that. But then the, the other comment or question that I had, in addition to any summary that you might give, is, is, while we, it looks like there may be some data gaps. We don't have great evidence right now of health concerns. Were those to emerge in, 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 in the future, would we have tools to, to take action against that?
Mayor, Councilmember Troutman. So to address your first question first, that is correct. So the state legislature essentially gave these users the right to be in the, in the right-of-way. And so the city has basically no, no opportunity to say no.
Which we're grumpy about.
To these applications, yes.
To put it mildly.
Which a lot of cities are grumpy about. And in addition to that, there are, you know, severe limitations on, you know, being able to say where. When the applications come in, they, they get to say where they want to go. And so this, the statute actually says that cities can't require them to go elsewhere. And so, you know, there, it's very restrictive. In other words, they have the right to be there and there are not a lot of conditions or restrictions that you can put on this.
And if we were to unilaterally just refuse these folks, would we create liability for ourselves?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. With respect to the, the health-related issues, I think Ms. Palin has, has addressed that pretty adequately. But as of right now, the FCC has set the standards. And if, if the city were to impose conditions that were contrary to that, I think that that could also expose the city to, to some claims or liability. Because if you wanted to refute that or put, put conditions that were contrary to that, you would need to have some proof, some evidence, some studies to, to contradict the standards that the FCC has established. And to my knowledge, we And to my knowledge, we don't have anything like that. And so, I think that, at least at this point in time, that's what we're dealing with. That's kind of the, the scheme that we're dealing with.
Other questions? Councilmember Supple?
So, we don't have a choice in this matter, but I would like to get into notification. It seems, can you review with, are the neighbors notified within a certain radius of each of these new booster stations that it's going in and what the effects are?
Mayor, Councilmember Supple. With the CUP process, this process that's happened, neighbors within three hundred and fifty feet are notified, yes. However, this conditional use permit is only applicable to a small cell that is going into residentially zoned areas. In commercial areas, in mixed-use areas, these are permitted by right. We are not allowed to require a conditional use permit. And so, no, there is no notification that goes out.
So, I guess I would like to encourage, if anybody receives that notification, to look at the materials on the website for our agenda. There was a lot of really good information about where the pattern of dispersion or dispersal is and everything. And, you know, like near the ground, it didn't look like there was much effect. But I know one of the transmitters that it was going to affect the trees, so that would not be a good place, like to put your child's tree house. And so, people need to be aware of those things, and they should really look at the information. It was very good information.
And Councilmember Supple, I'll follow up. Councilmember Wayland also contacted me about the tree issue in particular. And I, I did contact AT&amp;T. And they stated that that homeowner will be notified by certified letter of what's going on and the impact it could have on that tree. And if they were having anyone trim the tree or climb in the tree, that they should be aware of what's happening there.
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Two clarifications, and then one question. Just a couple of things that were sort of raised at the Planning Commission meeting that have been resolved, that I just want to make sure, for anyone listening in, that we, we lift up. There was discussion of trying to create sort of a buffer zone, asking if that would be something within the power of the city to do to that, for someone with a diagnosis of electromagnetic hypersensitivity. And, and that is essentially not possible. Electromagnetic hypersensitivity is not recognized as a medical diagnosis by the World Health Organization. So, that's another, yet another instance where we're kind of, what we might try to do is precluded by kind of larger groups. And then the second clarification, there was, in a, kind of a separate chunk from the, the health concerns, there was also a concern about how many of these are there going to be? This is just the start. Are there going to be, like, one in everybody's yard? What, and so, just to lift up the, the, these only work if they are at least one, if not two, blocks away from any other similar small cell facility. And so, I don't, there certainly would not be multiple on the same pole and not on the same block. So, allaying some of that concern. The one question I did have, and I don't know if, if a representative from AT&amp;T is here. It seemed like the one thing that was maybe variable or possible is kind of the signage, that it seemed like some residents would appreciate just having more signage to know where these, where these are. And it, I saw in the reports that SiteSafe had recommendations about signage. And so, I was just wondering if you would clarify kind of what your policy is around on, are around when you do or don't put, like, notice on these light poles that there's a, a small cell facility?
Councilwoman Wayland, my name is Valerie Bragman, and I'm Director of External Legislative Affairs for AT&amp;T. I'm joined by Patrick Jones from SAC Wireless, who is the vendor that we utilize through our, for our construction of small cell wireless facilities. We do have stickers. We're mandated by law to have stickers that do identify that there are radio frequency activity and they're up high on the, the small cell wireless facility. And that's really for the, the crews and the staff that have to work around that. Not only our crews, but also other utilities that might be working in those areas. Think you'll see similar to maybe right in your backyard here with the large macro site that you have, some similar signage that's around there, just alerting people to that.
Are there, are there any at, like, ground level for the average, like, resident to see?
Not at this time. We set them up higher. So, the, because the purpose is really for those crews that are going to be working at those sites. If they were to be placed lower, we've seen that there's a greater chance vandalism, for removal, for a whole host of things. And, and really, the intent is for the crews that are going to be working in and around the small cell facility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Well, I just wanted to say, I think you did a great job in putting this report together, Melissa. I mean, it.
Thank you.
You know, I would be lost, but, but that's, this is really helpful. Thank you.
I would like to say, watching and reading over the notes of the Planning Commission, I really appreciated the robust discussion and all of the residents that came and shared their different perspectives on this issue. There was one last item. Could you just clarify for us, Melissa? You had said in that meeting that there was going to be some, the staff was going to study this issue. And could you just share the scope of that study?
Sure, Mayor. We did continue to look into the issue of the electromagnetic hypersensitivity. We have done that. As Councilmember Wayland reported, we found that that was not going to be something we could do. We also looked into the issue of separation, a policy regarding separation. We spoke to AT&amp;T. As Councilmember Wayland indicated, they generally need a one-to-two-block radius, but also, the statute prohibits us from putting in place separation requirements. Were there other, I think those were the two items that we were going to follow up on.
I just wanted to make sure. It wasn't further study on any other issue. It was those two specific things?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then just lastly, I would just like to say, I, I would say this is extremely frustrating to open up our right-of-way to, to private companies to the, from this, from the city use and a very little reimbursement to us and not knowing the public health concerns or the individual health concerns. This is somewhat of, this is uncharted territory in many ways. And, you know, it, it is frustrating. And I would just ask people to please go to their state representatives, to go to their congress folks, to, to ask for money to support more studies on the health impacts of, of these facilities. And there's not much we can do here at the City Council outside of what we're doing. Any last comments? Is there a motion to approve?
I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved for several resolutions for conditional use permits to allow small cell wireless facilities at multiple locations throughout the city. Thank you. The next item goes to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is consideration of the adoption of a resolution appointing a representative to the Board of Directors of the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board. On June twenty-fifth, nineteen ninety, the City Council approved an ordinance to levy a three percent tax on gross receipts from lodging from hotels and motels in Richfield, and established the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board Incorporated and the appointment of directors for that board. There's currently five director positions, and each term is a three-year appointment. And there are, four of the positions are filled, and the, the remaining one is vacant. And given that the, the current four positions that are filled are, they're hotel employees, and so, we're, the recommended approval based on the, the candidate, candidates they reviewed is a Richfield resident, and I think this is part of a, an ongoing process that I, I guess now I'm adding my commentary. But to add more, some more resident input into this, into this board. But I don't know if, at this point, if there is a staff report at all for this item, or?
No, just to say that we'll be bringing this to you at a work session on September tenth. I've looked at, we're looking to update this agreement. It's, you know, since it was like nineteen ninety. And we did some research to look at other CVBs, and want to bring that to you to see if we can strengthen that agreement.
So, with that, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution appointing a representative to the Board of Directors of the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board, with that recommended approval being for Lisa Rudolph.
Second.
Open for discussion. Any comments from councilmembers? Councilmember Garcia.
I just wanted to mention that I'm glad that we're going to have a work session with the tourism board because of all of the, what we have, you know, every, every aspect of the city we know about. This is one that we know the least about. And I think it, it operates under the auspices of, of the City Council or the city. So, I think it would really be helpful to promote as much transparency as possible. And so, I look forward to that, and I, and I look forward to getting, you know, some, some good, good clarification of, of the misconceptions that we may or may not have. And also, you know, I, I don't know whether it was the mayor or, or one of the other councilmembers that said, when we were talking about the ice arena, and they, they said, "Well, we've got to think big." And I think this is, this is, we should at least know what they're doing, and we should have a say-so on what they're doing, advice or consent or something. But, but I think we've got to think big.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
I'd echo that, and was curious, I don't know if, if staff know or if a representative of the board is here. Just because this, this board is separate, it's, it's in some ways similar, but in many ways not similar to the, the other boards and commissions. I was just hoping to learn a little bit more about the, the process for encouraging people to sign up. Do we know what that process was?
So, one of the things that, when, when I did my research, and we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves because it's coming to you at the work session. But one of the things that was inconsistent with some of the other convention and visitors bureaus or tourism bureaus is that they have city representatives on their board, usually two. And so, that would be one of the recommendations to strengthen our agreement with the tourism board and have them add city representation. They also all had the, either had a requirement of citizen representatives or a certain amount, or they would have up to citizen involvement on their boards. And I think that would be another addition to have citizen representation on the board as well. We did, I did not specifically ask the other CVBs how they recruited for the, the additional residents or citizens. But I think that because we are so consistent and have such a robust process for appointing citizen representatives to our boards and commissions, that it would make sense that we just go with the, our city process.
Thank you for that. And I, I should say, that's not to, to question the, the appointment. I'm excited that Lisa will be doing this. One of the notes I didn't get to, she is the, the Chair of our Community Services Commission. And I think, as Edwina started pointing to, the, the tie between recreation and this tourism board is, is really natural and important. And so, I think this will be a, a great connection.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I think we should mention that, that they've recommended Lisa Rudolph to be the, the member of the board. So, so just for people to know.
Yes, Councilmember Wayland, I think, did mention that. Councilmem, oh, Councilmember Troutman?
Were you finished, Councilmember Garcia?
Yes, I just, I just, I know he mentioned it, but I didn't think he mentioned the last name, so wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention for our, our colleagues that weren't, that are, that are newer to the, to the council. Initially, there was an invitation to kind of have this broader conversation, and part of that appointment process was going to be considering this, this new appointment. And for a number of reasons, the board made the decision to unilaterally make this recommendation. So, I have some concerns about them. We're going to work those out at the, you know, some, some of those on, on the tenth, and I'm looking forward to that. So, I, I object a little bit to the process of this appointment, but I'm really excited about the outcome. I think Lisa Rudolph is great. I was going to mention, in addition to everything else, she's been a pioneer for the Richfield Rocks Curling Club, which is just another event that, or another, another group that brings people to Richfield. And she's a professional photographer, and obviously, very civically engaged too. So, she brings a lot of skills and a lot of assets to that board. So, so I, I support, support Lisa and look forward to, to having the, the conversation on the tenth.
Any other comments? Nope. I'm looking forward to the study session as well. Councilmember Wayland, you made the motion, correct?
Yes.
It was seconded, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion has been approved.
I, I think Lisa's going to need a bigger closet to hold all her hats.
The next item is a city manager's report, and that will go to City Manager Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to report that we are actively working on some greater education on roundabouts and yielding to pedestrians, including some pop-up events at some of the roundabouts, like the one at Lindell, to not only educate drivers, but also educate folks that are trying to cross as a pedestrian. So, we are working on that. And then also, to say thank you to the Police Department and, and all the staff that participated in our Night to Unite, especially Jill Mecklenburg, who organizes all of it. And we had thirty teams that went out, and you are absolutely right. It was just an honor to get out and talk to Richfield residents, and one of the highlights of my job.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will move claims and payroll. And I'm sure that everyone's looked it over and, and will be voting in the affirmative.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims and payroll has been approved. And seeing we have no further business, I adjourn this meeting.